Okay, um, well, to the third day of November 7th, council work session. In attendance, we have Councilperson Kamara, Council, sorry, Camera, Councilperson Cos, Councilperson Martin, Councilperson McNamara, Councilperson Wolf, Councilperson Bruger, Mayor, Mayor, I mean, it's the last name, right? It doesn't have your title down. Mayor Suther, Jesse Shrimp, our legal counsel, Eric Fisher, our village planner. This gentleman is going to talk about, Brady, who's chair, planning and zoning. I know the names, and if they would have said, they did say that, I knew exactly what it was, I apologize, I did not recognize your face. Um, I apologize to everyone for not having a more detailed agenda sent out. We are, of course, this was planned for planning and zoning, so I figure that was basically all of it. We didn't need all the little points. Um, to everyone's patience, though, you still plan to go over legislation. Mayor Suther had said she would like to bring some upcoming legislation to our attention. Then we can go into the code. And, uh, Councilperson Cos, I know you had sent something about short-term rentals about an hour ago. I figure that winds into the code.
Yeah, it does.
We maybe even talked about that before the presentation. Since that is not written code, that's something we need to talk about, we want to add in.
Yeah.
Then our attention can be focused just on what's done. Does that work for everyone? Anyone have an objection?
No.
Okay, let's run through our scheduled legislation we have so far. 14/20/23 is the K-9 Fund, second reading, moving on. 15/20/23 is First Responder Retention Incentive Fund, second reading. I'm gonna again say moving on unless someone puts up a hand and wants to chat about it. Ordinance 16/20/23, Supplemental Appropriations for the Current Expenses of the Village for our further year 2023, second reading. Um, I have the whole packet, so I have to flip down to see what that's all about unless someone has it on the top of their head.
I can't, I can't scroll through the packet.
Yeah, can you guys put that up?
Okay, this is storm sewer money sloshing around. Uh, putting things in Storm Sewer Maintenance Fund. That's what that one was. Anyone want to knock the money into a store or a storm sewer fund? All right, not seen a lot of people arguing on that.
Except, was that 16/20/23? This is ARPA First Responder Retentions.
We already did that one.
16/23 is the appropriations. 15 is first responder.
Okay.
At least on the agenda, if it's labeled differently.
Yeah, I was looking at the legislation.
Okay. Um, and then ordinance 18/20/23, here's one we do need to chat about. Um, Principal Officer Mr. Welchett sent this out today. Uh, why I say we need to chat about it is he has it listed that he would like us to waive the first and second readings and move right to number three and pass it. Um, he sent a description of the changes, but to my knowledge, did not send a description of why we would waive readings for it.
There were reasons on the, on the thing in the attachment. If you look.
You might have seen a different attachment.
There's a supplemental appropriations 10.
Yeah, appropriations 10, is that the thing you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep, supplemental appropriations 10, yeah.
So there's reasons there.
Training services.
Replacement.
Uh, no, no, I saw that. That's where the money is going.
Do you guys want me to read it out?
My point was that I don't see reasons for why it needs to be.
Replacement radar unit and new car, investment advisor fees, office supplies, anticipated increase in utilities for new building and temporary office, county auditor property tax collection fees.
Again, I actually saw the reasons that the money's going to. My question was, I don't see reasons for why we need to skip readings and pass it.
Probably to pay somebody.
Right away.
So, well, there's one that says payments to county agencies deducted property tax settlements. It sounds like it's probably a bill is due situation.
Probably, that'd be my guess. Uh, then my question would be, we should definitely pass that one so it can get paid if we're delinquent, but not necessarily do we need to lump all of it in and waive readings? I mean, I also see the additional new bricks to be ordered.
I think that's pretty important.
Bricks that we need to finish the building or something, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds important.
They wanted to get that done, I think, before, um, November 11.
Yeah.
So I think there's a couple things on there. But yes, there is a choice.
I feel like we should, because all of these seem legitimate, and I don't.
He'll be here next week, too. Yeah. To explain himself, so.
All right, I didn't really have an opinion on it with the board, looking for the voice of council before we move on.
I have concerns.
So if no one has any concerns about your readings, good, then we can go forward with that. Um, that is the current packet.
Okay, so a couple of things that are going to be coming, and honestly, I just want them on your guys' radar in case people have additional things they want to add before we get to it. Um, the fee schedule before the end of the year is something that we would like to get, um, adjusted. There are a few things that we thought were on there that are not, and things that do need adjusted. Um, for example, I know in, um, Wreckin' Parks, uh, we have talked about the grill, and it is not on the fee schedule, so that's one thing that needs on there. Um, the cruiser fee is at $15, needs to be 25. There are multiple things on there that we want to get adjusted, so we will get that sent out to you probably in red, just to kind of show you which ones or put them in parentheses. But if you guys could take five minutes, look at the fee schedule, see if you think there's something that's not fair, something that needs to be added, something that needs to be changed, now's our time so we don't have to continually do it, and that goes for you too, Eric. So if there's something on there that we really should be looking at.
When, so just for, um, I don't know, point of order, we did pass the thing that fees to residents are capped in a certain way.
Correct.
We did include a way to circumvent that, so just in whatever you're asking, it either needs to comply, or we need to make certain we're following the steps to.
Several things are just new.
Yeah, new is fine.
So, um, yes. So several things will be new, and that may cause a problem already with, um, some bounce checks and some things like that needing to go up to cover our expenses. So we'll get to that when we get there, because yes, we might already have a problem. Um, or it's going to cross the village sign. So, without any further on that, that's number one. Number two is, um, the message boards. So throughout the village, we have our post of notes in multiple places. Those places are now going to be a little different, um, unless we're going to, the current message board is not going to be there. We do not have the entry the same way that we had it before, so we are down to not having as many options. Um, so thinking about adding a message board somewhere throughout the village, still having one at the community building, obviously, and just determining where that is. So if anybody has any good ideas or bright ideas, um, that would be awesome, so.
Like a TV, that kind of issue.
Well, and that, we think that we can actually use that, but I don't know if that is going to be considered, the scrolling, the scrolling message board, so that might be one as well.
Oh, yeah, that's in the front. We have that in the building.
So, um, but, you know, again, there's, if we want to add some somewhere or adjust them, um, but the one that's up there right now, I think is down or coming down. So, message boards is one of those.
I have a question about that.
Go for it.
I think I asked this before, but is there a way for us to just change it so we don't have to have as many?
No.
No?
Despite, it's prescribed. Statute.
Need a charter.
Working on it.
Um, okay, and then the other thing, just a quick update, because we're at the work session, or do you want to do all these at the end? The Jordan Road project?
We should do.
Do that.
Uh, yeah, we might as well, if we have important updates, get through them real quick.
So we have almost all of our easements, we are still in need of one particular person. We have not made contact whatsoever. We have tried letters, we've tried knocking on the door, we've tried, no. We have one that we've not contacted at all, yeah, next to.
Yeah, 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 I saw him the other day.
So everybody else has at least been in contact with Jesse. Um, everybody else, we at least have a pathway.
Yeah.
So they may not have signed yet, but we are in contact and working. We have one that I have knocked on the door, I have sent letters, I have delivered letters, and at this point, zero acknowledgement of any of those. So it is still moving forward, um, but we do have, um, one little hiccup that we need to work out. Uh, last but not least, we are working on the resolution where we pass the, um, the recurring contracts. So this really isn't necessarily for you guys, but if you do think of something that you need added on there, like, I actually, maybe this is for you guys, um, some of the ones that we use for the pool concessions and things like that, if there's anything like that that we may need to add on there, just let me know. Um, but that is also going to be coming to you guys, so again, just trying to get it on the forefront, so you guys know it's coming. And that's all I have right now.
Mayor, I have the one, I just.
Go for it.
I talked to the, just FYI for council, we talked to the Board of Elections. Uh, we had a resident drop off a, uh, notice of a petition for an initiative to prohibit the sale of fireworks. Uh, it had, it met all of the requirements under the revised code, so we called the Board of Elections to see basically, you know, you know, what is the timeline and what do we do? Uh, as of now, they have to get the signatures required, and it would be on the ballot next November. Uh, the board just said to let council know that that had been filed. So in between now and ne- next August, they have time to get their signatures and get it filed to get it on the ballot. So just letting you know that.
Okay. I'm done. I mean, that's all I have right now for all of this.
If you're ready, sir, we can proceed.
Um, if that's all done, then, uh, Councilperson Cos, you wanted to add something to the agenda, you sent a.
Okay, so I sent like a little, um, PDF, I mean, it's not super professional, but it just talked about, um, my other pet project, which is regulating short-term rentals in the face of intel moving in, and all of these other changes to our community. I think it would be a really good idea to address some of these, what I call loopholes in our code, and I also want to talk about short-term rentals, and maybe consider regulating it before it becomes a problem. Um, so this just kind of talked about how you would go about this, why would we regulate home sharing and short-term rentals, because it just talked about good reasons that I agree with. I don't know if anybody had a chance to go over it, or if you want me to.
I looked over some of it.
I looked over at least that opening part.
Yeah, so my concern is, how are we gonna, you know, deal with so-called party houses? Um, you know, trash issues, noise issues, like how much of a detriment to our ability, you know, to, to protect our villages is going to detract from our police force, et cetera, you know, enforcing these laws and noise complaints, et cetera. Um, losing out on tax revenue, I don't know if that really applies to us that much, but, um, mostly it's the effect on property values as well, so I just, you know, um, it just kind of laid out how we would regulate this, so any kind of verbiage that we would talk about, I think this is a pretty good intro article on how to do that and be proactive about it, because obviously, I am the proactive one on council, as it turns out, and I foresee this potentially being a problem. I just wanted to bring that up to talk about and see where everybody is with this, because this pretty much spells out how we would be able to do this.
I'll agree with you, because I don't want this neighborhood to get turned into some rental hall place, and it's out of control, so I say we go ahead of it.
Yeah, and the guys, my, honestly, my thought process with this is like, we are in a great location for party houses, to be honest. We're pretty close to Easton, it's Uber-able, but it's too far away from Johnstown and things like that, where somebody could rent out a house for the weekend, trash it, party, whatever, be close to Easton, and then just leave, which I don't really think would be an asset to our community. So kind of, I would like to nip that, nip this in the bud, potentially, because I do read a lot about other neighborhoods and how this happens to them, and what a big pain in the butt it is to deal with, once it's already there. So, that's where I'm at. Anybody, discussion?
Something like no house rentals, period?
Just, I would say no short-term rentals.
Yeah, sound good.
Um, so effective short-term rental regulation starts with explicit policy objectives and a clear understanding of what regulatory requirements can be enforced. Um, so I like this one, to ensure that traditional residential neighborhoods are not turned into tourist areas to the detriment of long-term residents. Um, I see the potential, I always am an optimist about Minerva Park in general, I think it could be, and I would like to keep it a residential quiet neighborhood, um, and make sure it doesn't negatively affect property values. Um, we don't have a lot of hotels around, in my opinion, so I think there is a lot of potential for a party house. Um, um, um. Okay.
Is this something that would go in the code rewrite as we're discussing it right now?
Can we put it in the code rewrite, or do you?
It's up to council.
It is up to you. I can draft it, I've drafted them, I just need some, it doesn't have to be guidance from everybody, if Councilperson Cos wants it brought up, she has the right to tell me, you know, make it this way. I just need some sort of guidance on it, because it can go any number of about three dozen ways.
Oh, yeah.
Into how you do it, so.
What is a short-term rental? I mean, are we talking?
It is less than 30. Yeah, that's how it's like, legally, yeah. Once you're, yeah, once you hit 30 and beyond, then you're a month-to-month through a tenancy rental.
Can you do it to where you're not excluding the people that are maybe going to Florida for three months and wanting to rent their house out June, and I'm just asking, June, July, and August, to where we're, I mean, what I'm hearing is, we want to avoid the Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night.
Yeah.
Yeah, loud music, crown, yeah.
I mean, we have, we have drafted ones that limit you to being able to rent it out 14 nights a year. Totally. So, you know, that.
In the short term.
Like a Murfield.
Yeah, in the short term, yeah.
Because that would be for, yeah, like Murfield and stuff like that.
Like Murfield for the memorial.
Yeah, Memorial, Irish festival, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can do it.
I still, I like the 30-day idea. I'm totally okay with that.
I mean, yeah, you're, you're. 30-day idea?
Yeah.
30 days.
I think that's fair.
And they were coming in for like the whole summer or whatever, they could do.
Yeah, fine. I'm okay with that, I love people.
A renter can rent for over, for a month?
Yes.
That's what, okay, okay.
Perfectly reasonable to me, Councilperson Cos, you're already.
The weekend is basically what you want to nip out immediately, yeah.
Right, so, but like, I feel like 30 days, you know, even a week, you can pretty much trash a house and party for a week, you know what I mean? So, do we need that? Personally, I think no. So I think 30 days is fairly reasonable and easy to define, and probably already in some sort of other legislation that has been tested in court, maybe, so why don't we go off of that?
Do we, do we need to restrict people's use of their property, and to protect us from what at this moment is perceived?
It turns out that, yes, we do.
I, I would say I disagree.
Okay.
Right, and I don't think that restricting somebody's liberty on how they use their property for their best use is, you know, for, and again, the kinds of things that you're talking about, as I mentioned before, we have other ordinances on the book, so if it's a.
You said that about fireworks, too, so.
If there's a park, well, hold on, now you're changing the subject, right? So if it's, if it's the concern is that people are going to rent it and have a party that's noisy, we have noise ordinances.
We talked about this, I just don't think that there is enough bite in the ordinances that we have on the books to deter this, that they would take a chance, and I would rather just spell it out to cover my basis.
So if we can talk about enforcement real quick while we're all discussing.
That's, yeah, that's what I.
So let's, let's go through, because it's kind of similar, nuisance, I think we have a little bit of a quicker in on enforcement versus this, where we'd have to go to court and get an injunction, right, to start with, if they're doing it regularly, I mean, go through that one.
But we could have both.
Why can't we have both?
That's what, that's what I was wondering.
You can.
Talk about the pros and cons.
So the only, this is just devil's advocate, we, in order to enforce it, you're going to need to have a fairly robust registration process.
Mm-huh.
And so you're not, I mean, just, that's something to think about, is the manpower on who is doing that, what is the, who is doing it, who is going out to enforce it, who is making sure they're not renting it? So these are just things to think about in drafting it. I mean, I, because I saw it in that, I've seen that, the articles sit around, is helpful, it's very good summary, it also has a flow chart that has about 1,300 steps. But that includes many, many options that are probably not necessary. So it's just, we're just have to think about staffing on it, and who's in charge of that. Um, you can, of course, if they're nuisance, you can sue them to enjoin them. This would, this would have, the ones I have seen, basically make it a, uh, first time, first time you're renting, you haven't been registered, and you're in violation, it's a second-degree misdemeanor, third time, it's a third-degree, and it just, it just increases by there, increases the finage, so it'll, it can go up to $1,000 for a first-degree misdemeanor or unclassified. Um, so those are, those are options.
Yeah.
This is, this is not our mayor's court at this stage, right?
Uh, you can, you can do it in mayor's court, yeah. We can, yeah, we can make it so it comes to mayor's court, because they'll just write it under our local code if we adopt it.
Yeah, so, and again, my, the purpose of this is not like to have a registry and do all this, I just want it on the books, so it's, if something like that happens, it's clearly spelled out, hey, we don't want this here, to deter it from coming in, as opposed to, well, it's already here, and then we have other options in order to enforce it. The whole point is to deter this.
Now, how do you?
Well, that's fair.
Decipher between a residential rental, if you don't have a registry?
Well, that's.
Like, I do, and I'm just thinking about it, and maybe this is dumb, but like, if I left, I'm not renting it to my son, but if I left and he had a.
Oh, sure.
Crazy party for a weekend or whatever, obviously, his is different, then he wouldn't be cited for that, he would be the noise organism.
Right, right.
Well, what happens if someone does have a crazy party? What hap, like?
That's a nuisance.
No, that's a nuisance, so, but we're talking more, anybody can do that at any given time, so.
Right.
I'm just, I, I feel like you almost need a registry, but are they going to register? No, you're going to find it on Airbnb.com.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking outside the box.
Right, right.
I'm sure it's gonna, you're gonna have to.
The thing is, it's like.
Looking for them until it's a problem.
Yeah, we would have to go into it.
Yeah, you'd have to be, yeah.
Like, it doesn't have to be.
Somebody have to report it.
Perfect.
Sure. I mean, you want it to say, you cannot rent your house out for less than 30 days.
Correct.
And if you do that, it's violation of.
It's a fine, yeah.
I'm, I'm just gonna go out there and say, I am not comfortable telling someone like that they can do that or not with their home. And now, it's weird, because I'm not a fan of a lot of things, but at the same time, if you own a home and you want to rent it on the weekends.
Okay.
I think you should.
Okay, I want to run a brothel out of my house.
Quite frankly, I'm okay with that, too.
But that's, but that's on the books, and that's illegal.
Right, but that, that's a different enforcement.
I mean, that's your house, and that's.
Free, but that's on the books, that's another law. So in our perceived society, that's like frowned upon. But like.
Okay, maybe we should kind of go, and I don't know, we're in a work session, so I don't want to start.
If I may make it.
Go ahead, yeah.
I would, you know, recommend, because of the, there's a lot of scope in this, I would personally like to see it start in P&amp;Z, you know, because it's a, it's a legitimate concern, and there needs to be some time on the debate, and some time on the discussion, and then there needs to be a recommendation up to council once they get something there. And then we can, we can put it on the books.
Yeah.
After this whole thing, regardless, we can put it on the books at any time. I think, I think it needs, I think it needs more time to be discussed and meted out, quite frankly, and I think it's a perfectly reasonable request, but I think it needs to go, because of its size and scope, I think it needs to go through a process.
Now, what if Planning and Zoning decides to, I'm just saying, that they don't, they don't think it's important, and, and I'm not, I'm playing devil's advocate here, that's what I do best.
It goes back to this body, right?
Yeah, they just.
It doesn't go back to this body, if Planning and Zoning.
Well, they, they make a recommendation of their name.
No, that's not true.
Yeah.
They follow their recommendations actually usually pretty close, too, because they're the committee, they're essentially the group that's supposed to, we're gonna get out the comb and do this.
Right.
If they don't do something, that doesn't mean we can't, they don't have veto rights or anything.
But what if we already went through that process, and Planning and Zoning said, I don't know if we need to do this, and now I'm bringing it up to council?
Okay.
And now we're saying, put it back to Planning and Zoning, and now we're stuck in the holding pattern.
They made a recommendation either way, whether they like it, don't like it, make changes, and send it up to council, and then council acts upon it, may change it back the way you suggested, if they don't like the Planning and Zoning did, they have full authority to do those things.
And did Planning and Zoning already go over this and just said it's not a concern? Is that what you were saying?
No.
No.
I understood what you said, sorry, Steve.
So, yeah, this is new.
Okay.
I mean, and, and I think, I think that body gives a fair review, Brady, do you have a thought on that?
If, if council would like, you know, the, the code says that we are to conduct studies and surveys relative to overall planning and all sorts of things, if council would like us to, to give two recommendations, um, one being, would we recommend this, and two, if we did, what would the best, uh, you know, the best practice be? If, if council would like to ask us to do that, we will do that.
I'm asking.
Sure.
It's fine with us.
Yeah.
From a staff standpoint, it's, it's like everybody said, it's council's directive, so feel free, you know, at the next meeting, just kind of direct it down to them, if that's what, you know, the votes say.
Do we have to officially direct that?
I would say, I think it's good to take a motion, but.
Can I just say?
Yeah, okay, you can't hurt to task P&amp;Z with the, with the review process. Yeah, doesn't have to be written up or anything.
No, you just, you just take a voice vote, so.
Okay. Sorry, I promised by the time you know nobody's on, I'll be able to. Okay, so that being said, I think we're now to the big presentation, correct? And was anyone else, has anything to squeeze in?
I have a lot for this.
Squeeze away.
No, for this, I'm ready for this.
This is before this, this is all, this all went backwards.
Yeah.
Um, there's also going to be another piece of legislation in front of you guys next week, um, that I did not get a chance to review. You may have already seen it, Jesse, or maybe you already approved it.
Yeah, that's true.
On the discarding of property.
Oh, I drafted it.
You drafted it.
Yeah.
So you guys have not seen it yet, I don't think. Um, I will get that sent out maybe tomorrow, as soon as I can, and it is, whatever's left over that's not coming back to the community building, being able to let potentially residents come in, and if they want a desk or something, it's, it's basically process.
Yeah.
It's, we're not going to throw it in the trash, we might go to here, we might do whatever, um, but it gives us the authority to do that, and that's coming up, you guys will see it.
And that, I drafted it to ask for wave for readings, because obviously, we don't want to move it twice.
Yes. So again, just wanted to get it in front of you guys, because I don't know if you guys are going to see it Monday, or Tuesday, or Thursday, but it's coming. That, that really is it.
All right, I gotta roll my sleeves up.
Yes, indeed, there's some rolling.
Yeah. I have a lot of opinions, guys.
Councilperson, are you ready, sir?[1541.12]
Okay, now I got the right one.
Okay. Thank you, members of council, mayor. Tonight, uh, I think as we've discussed, it's been a long road to get here. Myself, Jesse, Mike, Planning and Zoning Commission, Brady, our chair is here tonight to also kinda go through some background where needed on any of this. It is a, obviously a big document. It has a lot of parts to it. A lot of stuff is kind of required technical items, and so we're just gonna kinda, if there's any questions, obviously, ask. We're just, I'm just gonna kinda roll on down through it until we get to some of the meatier items that I know people would like to discuss a little more in detail. And we'll kinda stop and go through those as needed. And again, if there's something that piques anyone's interest, just go ahead and say, hey, right there, and we'll, we'll address any of it, so.
I do, I have reviewed it all and I have a list of questions, so.
Perfect. Well, as we, as we get through it-
And, a- as Eric and I were talking about this morning, we've had a busy eighteen months outside of this, you all have. So, there is not a, this has to be done for a first reading next week and passed by October. Take your time with it. Yes, man?
Can we remind everybody the process of where we are right now, what we're doing, and then what we have to do?
Right.
Because I don't know that they know, I know I know it, but I don't know that you-
So, we have it now, we have it, I believe, did we set it for a public hearing next meeting?
We actually have a public hearing this week.
We have, we have, we have public, which is fine. You have as many as you want.
Right, but it's not, it is not getting voted on next week.
No, no, it'll be, it'll be three full readings. Uh, a public hearing is set for next week, so people can come talk about it. We have it set for a first reading. You don't actually have to do it if you don't want to, if we have a bunch of changes tonight. Just, we need, before the third reading, we need to have as close to an absolute finished product as possible, sitting there for people to review.
So, I think we've already done two readings and have tabled it, have we not?
Yes, but we're gonna, we're gonna restart that.
We're starting out with-
Right, we're gonna restart that.
Yeah. And I, like, I hear every, I hear everyone's concern all the time, is it's a huge document, we wanna be transparent about it. And frankly, Eric and I both completely agree with that. So, take your time through it. If there's questions, we can fix it. If there's, you have suggestions, like I said, it's been a long time coming, so.
I, I personally envision that, you know, we've got the work session tonight, we can have another, you know, you can have this month, we can have another work session next month if necessary and finalize the document. We can set the three readings at that point and have a public hearing, you know, in late October, early November, and that's perfectly fine. And I think that way, after two plus years, we, we get the document done this year, which is good, that's the goal, right? But again, we're a little, we're flexible on that, and I think we can have plenty of input and time for public to speak up and things like that, so. All right, with that, we'll start at the front, and I'm just kinda, kinda just start rolling through it. And again, raise hands, holler out if you wanna stop and discuss any particular item, have a question.
All right.
So, beginning of this deals with membership. I think, you know, we, this has been changed a couple times in the past and, you know, mostly has to, you know, we're, we're, as Jesse has mentioned, we're told by the state, since we're a statutory village, how many members we have to have and what they consist of. Can't change that. We do have non-voting members, which has proved to be useful over time, and that's still in there. Some of this is just, again, some cleanup. This C, for example, is just cleanup and that was done way back in the day when they first set this out, so we don't need that at this time. We have a removal ability by council that wasn't in there before, so that is in there now. Uh, the non-voting members are in there. And, you know, Jesse also updated this, because some of this wasn't in the previous, the, the previous versions, and it wasn't online either, so we wanted to make sure that was included. That ordinance dated back to twenty twenty-one, so no, no changes sent in. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I already have my first question.
All right, so, we're, we get very specific about how a voting member comes into their term and everything.
Right.
But I don't see it for our non-voting members. Is there a term? Um, how are they selected? How are they replaced?
So that-
And I don't see it spelled out.
They are selected in the same manner that the voting members are selected. The mayor has brought them to council's attention, uh, in the past. And you will then, uh, you, you concur with that.
Right. I mean, I know what we do, what I, what I don't see is it in writing.
Any vacancy created in the, to me, it's D, just because it doesn't necessarily say voter or non-voting, that to me is a vacancy in general.
No, that's just a vacancy in general.
So, that to me means voting or non-voting.
But it also tests about unexpired portion.
Okay, then that is not, yeah.
We can just copy and paste beyond G if that's really, I mean, when we put this together some time ago, it wasn't, we just, I think, assumed, so we'll-
Do you want it to be?
Qualified electors of the village chosen in the same way as the voting members.
Yeah.
Add that there and you're good. Your cursor's even right where it needs to be.
So, you can just, you can just blow them on.
And to date, we haven't had anybody stay longer than three months, let alone two years.
Well, right now.
What are you guys doing over there on P and Z?
For non-voting members?
If you, if you look in, um, in G, they are called, um, advisory non-voting citizen at-large members.
Right.
If you look at B, they talk about each citizen at-large appointment shall be for two years, who begin one and thirty-one in the second year. So, your non-voting member is an at-large, but non-voting member treated the same as any at-large member.
That's what we've been-
So, would you, would you prefer if I just add, uh, non-voting after each in B? Each non-voting citizen a large appointment by the mayor?
Each citizen.
Yeah.
No, because B, that's how we do our voting people too.
There'll be each voting and non-voting if you want to clarify.
Just repeat it in G.
We're just gonna repeat it in G.
Repeat it in G.
That'll, that'll clean it up.
Make it, make it very easy.
Right, that's the idea.
Or in G, you could, you could add a reference back to, right, pursuant to or in, in accordance with-
Non-voting members shall be appointed the same manner as in B.
Okay. Very good. Okey dokey.
Sorry. I told you I read it.
Good job. Did your homework. All right, keep going.
Clear is good, okay. Anything other than, good job.
All right.
There is one, next one.
All right. Meetings, members, absences, quorum. Uh, again, these are just established rules to how this will work. Some of this, again, was altered. Um, I think we're altering it this time officially, so I think we've added a couple different things in here for member absent from, we made three consecutive meetings. Everything in there's fairly clear, unless somebody's got a particular-
I'm good. I'm good to make story.
Keep moving along. Powers is set down by revised code, this is a copy. Uh, again, Jesse made some reference changes there, this was modernized. Duties of Planning and Zoning Commission are in there as well, so if there's any questions about that, happy to go over it. We did not make any changes. Some of these were already, um, done. We did make a couple alterations here in G. And so, we wanted to clear it up with permitting, so we can have a very clear language concerning how the permitting works, and we put that in there under G.
I think G was actually already been done.
It was under, it was twenty twenty-one when we did that, that's right.
Can we just define village staff, or does that?
That means the person working in the office can approve your permit without there being, uh, extra stuff.
Okay.
They can just say, oh, he's doing that, yeah, we understand the county wants you to have it, we can approve it, and then you can go.
It runs from the mayor's authority essentially, so she's, she's the administrator. Right, I keep forgetting you added these in here because they weren't here.
They weren't, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
All right, so this is not, this is not a question in here, this is just a point of clarification. Some records-
Right.
The next section, are we aware? So, it says, uh, records from the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be compiled in a report, signed, and a copy shall be provided to the mayor and members of council within thirty days. And I don't know that I've ever seen any records given to us in the last two years, so.
You get the, we forward up recommendations, you get those records.
Right.
Right? There are minutes compiled from the P and Z, which are available publicly.
Right.
So, those are always published as well.
But it says provided to.
If you, well, technically, that's a providing to, and if you would like them, if you would like very specifically to get an email to provide to, then it can be done. I mean, I, I read this a little more flexibly, but they're, they're provided, they're not being hidden. How would you?
Uh, yes, I think it's, if you don't want it in there, I don't think there's any problem in striking it, and it'll just be on, on public record in the-
I just wanna clarify.
Yeah.
I would think of providing to as it would be in a packet for-
Sure.
Our reference, but-
It, it obviously has not-
I bet a lot of it's, because they record their-
The other thing is, it raises the record too.
You record your meetings?
We do, everything, everything is on those website in the way that your meetings are on.
I think it just-
It would, it's, the easy cleanup for purpose of, of keeping things inexpensive and, and disallowed would be to change, um-
So, let's point that out.
Let's point that out. Brady, Brady.
Provided to, say, available.
I think this is what it really is. Said records shall be compiled in report form and signed by the chair and copies provided. That would be the council person's liaison to P and Z, their report up.
They report up.
It's just the report, it's just the report that's compiled and provided to the mayor, members of council, it's not all the documents.
It can't be signed, you can't sign a-
Inter or what have you.
The language is outdated. So, I think we should probably compile it in a report form, uh, and then strike, signed by the chairman, and copies shall be provided.
All right, sure.
Yeah.
Because then, or copies shall be available. Well, again, there's no-
Are we, are we still calling it the municipal building?
Yeah.
I thought it was called-
I mean, this was, this, this language comes from eighty-five, eighty-nine, so it wasn't our language.
Are we calling it the community or are we calling it the municipal? We are calling it, I just wanna make sure. Okay.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, we may have to have two meetings.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor, the pavilion.
I have a lot of questions.
That's right.
Yeah, you and I both.
You know, that's, that's what we're here for, so.
This is the gunner section?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna go sit over there.
Now, two, two point oh six. Uh, again, all applications, how they're submitted, it just kinda lays it out. If there are any questions, this is just, uh, straight-up language. Keep moving on.
Building, um, I have-
Last is changed in twenty seventeen.
I put a note in here, just asking about building ordinances, is that sp- and I don't see where I highlighted anything, but I say pages three and four, it says building ordinances. Where is that? Is that a specific section? Is there a specific chapter that we're referring to? But I don't see it now, so.
I don't see it, yeah.
I don't see it either. So, if it pops up, we'll, we'll come to it.
Okay.
No worries. Okay. All right. Res zoning measures and authority. Did you make, you made these changes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so Jesse made all these changes to bring it up to current-
Yeah.
regs, essentially.
Any questions on it? I mean, I know it's a lot, it's, it, it sort of defines what the public hearing is. It requires us to follow the state code on those public hearings. It talks about how they, what recommendations they can make, they recommend, approve the conditions, or disapprove, uh, and then send a written record of that up to council. Council then holds a public hearing, uh, give notice of the public hearing, uh, and then we drop down to what is the new D, or renumbered D. We have this, this was in consultation with Planning and Zoning members. Council action that differs from the recommendation of the commission requires, uh, at least a three-quarter vote of elected members of council. So, I've seen cities that do this way. I've seen just a majority to overturn P and Z. It is, of course, up to you, but this is what came to us through discussion with P and Z.
Okay. And when we talk about building inspector, we mean whoever we have, because we don't have our own building inspector, we're talking about-
We use the county or, or blended township.
Right, so that's who we're referring to.
Yeah.
Correct.
And then, let's see, I think I have one more here.
Can you give me a little bit of context of why we decided three-fourths?
Sure, so if, and Brady's here, I'll just talk about that, but I, my read of the room when we did this was that Planning said, look, we have, we've spent the time on this. We are sort of in the granular details of it. If our recommendation is just simply an up-down vote by council, then what are we sitting here for? That was, I mean, I don't know, that's a little derivative maybe, but that, I think, was the, it was like, we've made a decision, and if, you know, if council wants to change it.
And I'd also say, I don't know, I, I, oh, yeah, you can't do two-thirds, because two-thirds, when you have six people, is just a single majority.
Right.
In order to make it something hard, you almost have to go five.
And there was a lot of discussion about that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure this is like, pretty well thought out.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it, it goes to, you know, checks and balances on-
Yeah, I think that's fair. That's legit.
If we're supposed to have the authority to, to, uh, to make recommendations, then they should vary weight.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just wanted somebody to show their work.
Very good. We've all about showing the work.
Yeah.
All right. Down to subdivision regulations, twelve ten. Uh, lots of definitions. Um, Mike, uh, added some things into this as well. Removed things that weren't necessary, so a lot of this has to do with, this is the village engineer's consultation, uh, and then, uh, again.
We matched up many of them with the Columbus Stormwater Manual, just so that-
There's, yeah.
So, just because I'm gonna reference this later on, on page twenty-eight, we talked about a hundred-year flood, but I feel like we struck it out of here in this section.
He did. He struck it out of an emergency flowway, because that's a definition of a hundred-year flowway, an emergency flowway, and he, he's, he's changed the definition, because that's the standards to regional flood now.
I'm just saying that on, when we get to page twenty-eight, we reference hundred-year flood, so we might wanna circle back and change that, so it matches here.
Right, because otherwise, we don't have a definition.
Change from a hundred year to regional in-
Yeah.
It may, it may very well, I'm gonna read that when we get to it, but it may very well be a hundred-year flood.
Right, but we need to define the terms that are in the thing.
Right, and it's, a hundred-year flood is a, is a def- a, a specific definition. We can add it in there. If Mike did not add it in, it needs to add it.
Right.
We were just changing to regional.
Those are now the five-year floods, but we used to think of a hundred-year floods as five or twenty-year floods. A hundred-year flood's getting scary.
Okay. Follow through the definitions.
I think it is, uh, I, I'm looking at regional flood includes one, one hundred-year flood.
Here's what it says, term of flight to a hundred-year flood event, so it's, it's used interchangeably now, and so that's, that's been cleared up.
So, we can change it.
Okay.
So.
That's fine.
Wait, there's something to change. Twenty ten, twenty two. Oh, no, wait. Where are we at?
Drainage. Drainage systems, all the, all the fun stuff with drainage. Moving. Streets, subdivisions, reg, or core zoning. All right. Down to amendments now. Unless there are any other questions on definitions. Okay. Just moving on through, just amendments, plat approval required. Um, we removed a number of these items.
Can you switch up just one half less of stuff?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, never mind, okay. I was just looking at why there was an underline there on plat. I thought maybe it was a different word, but it is plat, and Google's just having trouble recognizing it. I'd say, keep going.
I think, yeah, I think it wants, what does it want?
Not-
Yeah, it wants to change the word.
Yeah, it sure does.
Because it doesn't know what you're trying to say, because AI is not quite that great.
I like that one, though. All right.
Just caught my eye.
So, these are taken up by the village engineer. Do we need those? Uh, variances, I believe we got, we made a few changes here. Yeah, practical difficulties was included, that's the standard now by which you, you, um, address variances, not hardship. Preliminary plats, all the exciting stuff. I don't think you'll ever see a preliminary plat again, but we need to have it in there, because a hundred years from now, they may redo part of the subdivisions, I don't know.
That was a question I had.
Right. That answers it. It's in there because-
Are there some cases council will get a plat to per-
Right, right. Because it, it's possible we may adjust the plat at some point too.
Sure.
Right.
Yep.
It could also be done.
Okay.
Page thirteen. Oh, page thirteen, I have a question. Okay, filing fee, it says the plat fee to the village of Minerva Park, is that on our fee schedule?
I believe it is.
Mayor, do you have that in front of you?
Plat fee.
The fee schedule?
There is a plat fee.
Is there a plat fee on there?
Because they had to do that when they, they put that in there officially when the, um, subdivision was done over here.
Sure. I just want, since we referenced it, I just wanna verify. Did you find it?
I don't have it primed, it's-
Should be a development fee.
I'll note it, we'll make, I'll make sure we get that, because you're right.
Preliminary plat review, four thousand plus a hundred per unit.
Thank you.
Yep, perfect. That's it.
Final plat review is also in there.
Yep. Cool.
All right.
Where are we at?
All right, more minimum dimensions, twelve fourteen.
Twelve fourteen of five, okay.
Street widths. These are changes to standard definitions. All right, then the approval of the preliminary plat, so again, rules by which we approve that stuff, some of that got altered from, uh, the eighty, this is the eighty-nine version, so brought it up to current specs. Disapproval by council. Final plats, this is all the exciting stuff. This is the open space requirement, these, I believe, yeah, these were fourteen, so before, they, they redid all these when they did the last subdivision.
The, the drastic changes came in the eighty-nine and prior code provisions that had been touched. The fourteen to seventeen were all pretty good.
Right.
Good.
Just wasn't much of it.
Right, right.
By the village engineer.
Keep going, I do have a question coming up.
Sure.
Keep going, no, twelve sixteen oh eight is where my next question's at.
Okey dokey.
Okay. My, on, um, just, I don't know anyone that actually uses Mylar material anymore.
They do.
Do they?
Oh, yeah, they, they bring them in, we sign them, uh, whenever they, they still do, because the county-
But is that the, it sounds like we're requiring it only on that?
With the, with the physical signatures. Yeah, for, for plats, you, you have to, for this stuff, you have to-
Has to be on Mylar.
You have to put it on the Mylar for, because you submit those originals to the county, and the county saves them.
Yeah.
They have requirements for-
And we do, we do require it also electronically, so we're not, we're not fumbling around with the Mylar copy.
Yeah, it's not ours to keep anyways.
Because the county wants it.
We get a copy.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, not just regular black and white on paper?
Right.
Has to be on Mylar?
Right.
Very specific.
Interesting. Twenty-four is my next one.
Again, two, three, four. See. Any, any questions coming up?
I don't know, page twenty-four is my next, page twenty-four is my next one, so you can go.
Hold on, hold on, keep, hold on.
Oh, uh, uh, I just feel like this is a interesting term, that we have competent inspector listed in there. Like, we don't define what makes them competent.
I think when you're copying, you're, you're suffocating.
Yeah, it's just, it does mean that, yeah, it's sort of a weird term of art, it's a good catch.
If it's an industry standard on five.
Right.
Thank you. And then twenty-eight's where we have a hundred-year flood.
Oh, okay, yep.
Okay.
Whenever you get there.
We'll be there in a minute. Streets and section, we had a little bit of change there. Water supply, again, these are all Mike's, uh, big alterations. Run off, and drainage system.
Right there.
Okay.
Say a hundred-year storm event, kind of right to the left.
So, again, I think that just, it's just, it's Mike's doing, so.
That is, I mean, it is strange that he pointed out that it should be called, removed, and then left. I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop a comment in there and send it to Mike to say, yeah, 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 that's a good catch.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because he has a N D D too.
He, he, he has interchangeable definition, so that when we see it, it just, it's a matter against taste at this point. If you wanna make it all regional flood, but maybe there's a reason he didn't wanna make this one, you don't know.
Yep.
We'll ask him.
Uh, good intern.
Yep, yep.
Same term again and again.
Yep, I do agree with that.
Three A.
Three A.
Right there. Okay. Please help me understand this.
Wait, we're, sorry, we're.
Well, he's on, we're on page twenty-nine, and this is three A, so specifically, this has to do with constructed open water courses.
Yep. Tap of bank.
Full width of the channel from top of bank, top, top of bank to top of bank, plus ten feet. There may be a type of.
It says on one side, who gets to pick which side you go ten feet on?
Well, I would say the engineers do.
Okay.
It's not us, that's gonna prove this anyways.
It's not ten feet from both sides, it's ten feet from one side.
Right, I believe that's the way the terminology is, is not, yeah, this is the engineer that does it, we can ask him that question, too.
Okay.
But I think this is, this is just the current, the common rule sets now.
It just seems odd that the next one says twenty feet from the center, I mean, that would be ten feet on each side.
Yeah, so it's a top of bank, top of bank, ten feet.
It needs to be brought up, because it does, so it has to be, because it does say war, and then it goes to be, it must seem weird.
It just, it, yeah.
No, because you have to say this war that, so that doesn't seem weird, that seems more of a sense.
This is the fun stuff.
Oh, yeah, right there, okay, that was page, okay, I got it, cool. Okay, let's confirm, I'm just putting a note, Mike, explain this to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Engineering.
And then explain it to us.
Yeah, no problem.
All right.
It's like a joke, an engineer tells a lawyer.
Sewer connections. Nothing crazy. Sidewalks. Mostly, I was quite amused, actually, when I went through this, because the old section doesn't have sidewalks. They did adopt nineteen eighty-nine code, said, you have to have sidewalks on those sides.
Right, yeah.
For new builds, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, but, but what's funny is just, well, for, for the plat, right?
Yeah, for the nineteen eighty-nine code, they pretty much just grabbed someone else's code and slapped their name on it.
They did, we'll, we'll get to that issue.
I mean.
I'm not going, I'm not talking mad about anyone who lived in Minerva Park at eighty-five.
Does that mean anyone that's building a house on the few vacant?
No, this is specifically for plats, so for subdivision design, which is what they did here, so, which was standard. But no, if, if, if there's, we're not gonna make people build a sidewalk to nowhere.
Right.
Right.
There's no point in that.
Would be awesome, look at the house, I gotta have a sidewalk just in front of my house, how will my kids know?
Oh, yeah, happens on.
It happens in places where they require it, because one day they said, we'll build to it.
Yeah.
I mean, they did it in front of the new apartments that they just put in over here, they did it in front of this precision place right outside.
And they have a larger pathway plan, that they're gonna connect all those through, through project money coming out of pipe.
Sure, sure.
So.
Okay.
All right, pavement widths.
We're good for a while.
Cool, sacks.
I'm good till forty-one.
It's over my head a little bit.
Street.
I mean, in effect, most of what we were looking at in the last ten or fifteen pages will likely never be touched because there's no new plats coming in. Like I said, this is looking far down the, far down the road.
Yeah, I mean, some developer who wants to come here, does some dastardly plan and burns down all the houses.
Right.
I wonder how that's gonna happen.
Ready for it.
That's right.
They're gonna be like, oh, we still have to pay the tax for the plat fee.
Yep.
We thought we were getting around that, and that's been from our graves, and we'll stab at them.
All right, we're getting into zoning now, exciting part. So, still a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of stuff. Not changed, unnecessary, just definitional stuff, but if anyone has any questions, please bring it up, we're at twelve thirty now. Yes, go ahead.
Can you just explain? I just need a basic explanation of what conforming and non-conforming, just for everybody. So, the term is defined.
Right, I'll start it just so you'll jump in where necessary. So, essentially, conforming means the lot and the structure conform to the zoning code, as written.
Okay.
So, if the zoning code has specific lot parameters, the square, for example, has to be minimally certain heights and widths and depth, then that lot in that, you know, when a plat is done, typically they're gonna conform to a, a text, a zoning code. Just like this one did over here. Nowadays, it's standard to put these things in plan, planned districts, and then the council and the developer negotiate that out, and you get your plats, and everything fits, and everything's conforming, right? The structure, then, is built in the conforming, hopefully within the conforming lot, then has to conform to the zoning code, the setbacks, the building lines, the size of the structure, the coverage on the, on the lot, and et cetera. So that, so if everything is good to go, you have a conforming structure in a conforming lot. And as we'll, we'll get to, when this code was adopted in eighty-nine, it created a problem, a significant problem, where most of the, as we call it, the legacy section was non-conforming in some way or another, which causes problems for residents, whether they realize it or not. Down the road, if a fire happens, if some destruction of the property, tornado, wind damage, anything like that, you can have insurance problems because you are not conforming anymore. People don't realize that that's a real thing. You also cannot build a house back on the same spot where it perhaps burned down, without coming back to the village and going through a bunch of hoops to get variances on your lot, which can be, quite frankly, traumatic and problematic to residents who are looking to get their house rebuilt as quickly as possible, right? And, and, and quite frankly, should be able to do those things after something like that happens. So those are the main concerns, you know, as a, as your planner, that I, I will point out when we, when we go through this process. So, and we'll, we'll obviously get to the legacy planned district and discuss that in detail, you know, and there was a lot of discussion of planning and zoning as to how to, how to, how to rezone that section of the village, and how to make it all conform. So, all right, any others on that?
So, with this, this is just a point of clarification. So, if it is a non-conforming structure on a lot.
Right.
Do we define how it is non-conforming, or can I pretty much do whatever I want? Because, oh, it's not conforming, I can.
No, 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 you, you can't, you can't expand a non-conforming.
That's right.
Okay, that's what I.
Situation.
It just, and it can't cease use either.
And it is spelled out in here somewhere.
It can be spelled out here, it's also spelled out in revised code, I mean, there's multiple places where it's non-conforming and conforming are, are terms of the law, essentially.
And it is pretty solid in here.
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
It, it's pretty solid there in section C, on the non-conforming lots.
Okay, well, I don't speak legally, so it's.
No, 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 fair question.
Right, yeah.
What?
It's there.
Sorry, I speak a lot of other.
And that's, it, it says, you know, we have it in there, it is the intent of this zoning code to permit non-conforming situations to continue until they are removed, but not to encourage their continued use or expansion, that is black letter case law. You know, you can't punish someone for having something that's non-conforming, but as soon as they wanna change the use, or they wanna expand the footprint.
Right.
They're still, now they're, now they are controlled by the laws in place now, not what happened when they built their property, whatever.
Yeah, this is the reason when we have people that come into the village for their variances, you know, even if they haven't requested it, we try to make the lot completely conforming at that time, just like we did with that guy that was doing work on that house that he got in across the lake there on the other end, even though he'd only requested certain setback variances, we said, all right, the lot is non-conforming, we're gonna vary the lot, just make sure he's completely conforming at that point with his variances, so, and everything's good.
The comment that helped me understand it the most, I think, was Eric said it back two years ago, was you're allowed to have something that's non-conforming, but you're not allowed to do something that's non-conforming.
Right.
Okay.
So if, if my garage is not right, that's fine, because it wasn't when I got here.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that I could put an addition on my not right garage that is also not right.
Okay.
Yep.
So here's a scenario, what if I have a night, not right patio, and I need to, and it's in disrepair, and I need to knock it down and put out a similar one?
So if you, if you had, it doesn't, I would go more with the deck, because a patio is, you, the only thing where you have a patio would be non-conforming if you're right on your line, as an example now, as an example, or if you were, or if you were, had too much coverage, lot coverage. We would look at that on a case-by-case, right? And then, if necessary, just bring you up, you know, talk through it with you, see what you wanted to do. And then if you're really tied to whatever you wanted to do, at the end of the day, we can't administratively approve that. We, you have to go through a variance process.
Okay.
You gotta come before and get your variances and move forward on it.
And that is the point, and why variances are important, and, and why the law requires them, because there are scenarios where you can't draft something that fits everything. So if you just wanna simply fix the deck in the same footprint.
Yeah.
Simply request the variance to continue the non-continuing use, for whatever reason, go to the board, and then they have to explain why they're denying you, if they do.
Okay.
Okay, any others?
Which, I mean, it, it, this is a good, I know it's out of order, but this is a good segue to talk about why we're doing what we're doing with the legacy industry.
Right.
Because we're now saying that, well, today, that patio is non-conforming. Once this passes, it is. And so if you wanted to replace it to the same specifications.
I'm good.
You can do it without having to come back for a variance. If you wanted to make it bigger, you would have to come back, because it would be making a change to something that.
That's what I don't, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Right.
Cool.
That was very intentional to try and let people continue to do what they're doing in the easiest possible way.
Got it.
Garage burns down, build the same garage. If you wanna build it twice as big, come to us and ask.
Right. All right, okay.
I'm good, I'm good.
All right, I'm gonna move along then.
I've got a couple more pages.
Okay, keep going, hold on, I just wanna.
Twelve thirty now, it's definitions. Keep moving through those. No changes here.
Mount House, mobile homes.
We were good on variances, did we, though? Okay.
Yeah, we're twelve thirty, two one oh one, we did make some changes here. Some language.
Do we wanna add anything to, apart from houses, mobile homes, garbage and refuse handling?
This is just definitions.
Prohibited uses.
Oh, yeah, those are prohibited uses.
Is there anything else that you would recommend that we add in there, that maybe some other municipalities add in there?
Twelve thirty, it's a top of.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Oh, we're back.
It's, yeah, it's prohibited.
Right before definitions, okay.
Yeah, it's just a specific prohibition on.
Because it's very spelled out, but is there anything else that anybody else can think of that we wanna add in here? Because I think this is an easy, easy way to. I don't know, is there any other? Eric, this is you, who else has anything in there?
This is, so really, in, in your zoning code, there's two ways to look at this, you can prohibit uses like this, right? And then on your specific district, okay? Your specific district, for example, nowhere in the districts is a junkyard considered a commercial use. It doesn't meet the definition of what's in, in, in any of your districts right now, right? So it's, it's a hard no, you put it, it's been put in here as a, as a double cover.
Yeah.
Right, we don't want them, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can put, you know, whatever you wanted to specifically prohibit, I mean, you could say, we don't want.
Adult bookstores.
Well, but you can't, as you know, that, we have a whole section on that, you can't strictly prohibit them either, you have to have reasons as to where you stick them.
Yes.
It's a very specialized piece of code.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, but like, make it, I think this is just a good.
So here, you could say, I don't want any car sales lots, as an example, you could add that in here, right?
Okay.
So that way, because you're, under my read of your, you have a commercial code, there's a section in it for conditionals, but if you don't want it at all, since it is a form of retail, I would say, you put it here as an example. You know, but, but it's, it's one of those things to where the community, I can make suggestions all day long, right? The community is the one you guys live in, and if there's specific uses, you see them all the time, you can drive down state route three in Cleveland and see things that are there, and you may not like, and you can, you can say, we want those in the prohibited use category.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can put those in there.
Yeah, I just feel like this is a good, like, hard no.
Yeah, so we're gonna get, we're also gonna get to some discussion as we go into the zoning districts on, made some, uh, some proposed changes to the language, and we can talk about those.
Great.
As a whole, and then see if we wanna fly them in different ways.
So I'm just saying is, like, start thinking about.
Right.
I mean, or, also, you won't think about it.
Everyone, yeah, yeah. Everyone start thinking about.
Yeah.
This is maybe something we wanna bring up specifically, maybe to, like, when we have, like, citizen input and things like that, too. I think this is a big.
I mean, if the citizens wanna say something, and if there's something they really don't want, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Okey dokey. All right, definitions, back to definitions. Those changes there. Do you know what a question comes?
No, I'm good, I'm, it's the next page.
All right, yeah, variances, back to variances now.
It's not really a question, but.
All right.
So, sorry, we're down to C.
C.
C and variances?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me see, maybe not.
I think you're right, yeah, review procedure.
Hmm, yep. So, I'm just, this is the only place in this document that I see where things go to the village planner. Everywhere else is going to a code enforcement officer or something like that, and so I just wonder why.
Oh, sure, I mean, frankly, because it's the zoning code, and the planner has his fingers the most in, that's, that's why we just did that.
And it can be, you know, you can make that the mayor or their designee.
Sure, sure.
Can be done as well, too, right? Because again, I'm the designee of the mayor.
Right.
In this regard, it doesn't, makes no difference.
Should we do that?
I just.
It's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I think just for consistency, we do it everywhere else.
So upon, we'll change, upon the filing of the application, it'll go to the mayor or his or her designee.
I mean, again, and I didn't do a word search to see if planner was anywhere else, but that just caught my eyes. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, um, I'll double check that. Yeah, I must have, yeah, yeah. I must have done that, yeah, yeah.
Double check, I get, I get, be taken out, that's nice.
Then the other thing, I just have a note on this page that something's not numbered or lettered correctly.
Oh, thank you, okay. Oh, I see what it is, it goes C to A, right, right where we're looking at. Review procedure goes C to A, so, okay.
Of course, that was Microsoft's doing.
Let me, I'll comment that and fix it, fix.
And. Check under D, is that, is that right?
Which one is?
Under D, scroll down a little more. So D, and then we go to number one, is that right? But because number one is crossed out, you've crossed out the entire.
Well, it goes D, one, A.
But we have.
But you've crossed out one.
Yeah, we.
I don't have cross that one, that's why I don't see what I was.
Uh, it's this, see, the, the, the language of one is crossed out.
So we would pull it back up to one, is what it should do, one, two, three.
Exactly, because what, I, you know.
It may, it, it may fix when you accept that change.
Sure, the commission shall apply the following criteria.
Format.
So it's all to say, so, yeah, so I think, I think what's gonna, just so we don't have to dwell too long on the formatting, once all of this gets accepted, we'll go back through it and format it properly.
Yeah, and then we'll present both the red line and the, no, you're right.
We crossed it out.
I think what we mean there is that what's in the small letter D, in making his decision, the commission shall apply the following criteria, colon, and then those are what will be considered.
Special conditions, literal.
Yep.
And, okay.
Yep, so that's what they review in making their decision, so, yeah, you're right. The one, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Cool. Okey dokey.
Forty-two, on page forty-two somewhere, we talked about.
So where are we at?
Forty-one.
Yeah, yeah, appeals?
Yeah, under appeals, number two, at least one notice will be given, and then one or more newspapers in general circulation in the village. I mean, it just seems, that seems a little outdated that we're using the newspaper still.
We have to.
Yeah, that's statute.
That's required. That's required.
I know, it is outdated. You're right.
They have not changed it.
I can't imagine there's one single person that reads the paper to find that.
Yeah. I'm surprised they still print it.
Right.
We're required to publish.
Yep.
No, I knew that we would have to publish it, I just didn't know if newspaper, if it had to say newspaper.
Can we, is there something that other people are doing, too, like, thinking about the future? Like, are they gonna?
I mean, we do, I think, put all these on the website.
We do.
I think we Facebook them.
We do.
Yeah.
Shall we put that in there?
The only thing about.
No, that changes.
Then you require it.
Notification is what's required, and so we notify, and then we have to meet at least eight requirements. If the council wants to meet some other more strict requirements, you could put some other language in there. I mean.
I would just note that the constant nature of the shifting of how you note, so in fifteen years, is it gonna be Facebook?
I wouldn't use any specific terms to that.
Right.
I would say, we have to have some electronic notification, and then the website could meet that, but who knows what it'll be again in twenty years?
Right.
It might be a quantum mechanics of some type, right?
Right.
Hmm.
Hold it into your brain with a zip code.
Right, you never, you never know. So, all right. Appeals. Additional uses, more specific definitions to what's going on today. What plans?
Can you tell me here?
Anything coming up?
Yep, um, up at the top of this page, just what, what do we mean by walks? Sorry, it's in letter C.
Uh, the proposed useful parts of what's, actually, it could be accessways, walks.
What does walks mean?
I mean, walks are, walks are.
Are we talking about sidewalks or?
Essentially, essentially.
Paths, yeah.
Yeah, paths, should we change that?
Now, that's, that's a turn, that's a language that was used back, again, that was.
We could change that.
Change it.
We'd change specifically the pathways.
Sidewalks slash, or sidewalks, comma, shared use paths.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's scroll that.
I figured that's what I meant, I just wanted to make sure.
All right.
Okay, I'm good until page fifty.
Okay, good. Keep moving along.
Hold on.
I mean, if other people have questions.
Right, right. I mean, there's a lot of red on this, it is just, our, my goal here, and this is a lot of mine, is to make it just extremely clear when the council or the planning commission is reviewing something, what are we guided by in making our decision? Because if the village follows the criteria, then we have a lot of leeway in how we make our decisions, as long as we justify it with written standards.
Okey dokey. These. And these. Taken out. Minutes of code. Authority Plan Zoning Commission. Twelve thirty-eight point one.
Okay, cool.
Etiquette. Some reference points. Zoning District map, which we're also doing, do this process.
Okay, it's this chart.
Sure.
Keep going, oh, fifty, right there, the chart.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
The chart.
So you have R-three crossed out, but we have R-three on the map.
We got, it got, yes, it got, we'll just that legend point.
Okay.
There's a, there's a few things with the, with the map that are still being adjusted by.
Okay.
By the engineer, his GIS guy's doing it.
Yeah, planned commercial districts, we have that, we have.
Yeah.
Planned residential, so the chart in general, I think.
Yeah, square up the chart on page forty-nine, fifty.
There are a number of, interestingly enough, there are a number of designations in this that don't have tax that go back to it. I did not, I did not suggest changing it, because if we have, they don't hurt anything by leaving them in the code. Because some future point in time, someone may use that, it's basically a holding spot, you know? They adopted it, you know, without doing, the only major change we have is Minerva Park Legacy Plan District, which we'll get into when we get to that point in the code.
Okay.
Otherwise, we remove things that absolutely had, you know, no use, we don't have any type of industrial at this point. The only one is the planned industrial where the current storage facility is. So, you leave the planned industrial and place it, for some reason, you turn Jordan Road one day into a big, or a little bitty data center, you go into homes, and you can put that in a planned industrial district. There you go. So, it might be forty years down the road, you know.
You're on Park Place.
Yeah, you're in the back, you'd be behind that.
You're fine.
You gotta stop pushing my buttons, man.
It's not yours.
It's so easy, I know, but, ah.
Okay, most of this is struck out.
All right.
I think we should clean up that chart, 'cause it looks sloppy.
Well, the chart will be cleaned up.
Oh, yeah.
All that'll come out, that's nipped out there.
I think my point's more, I wanna make sure that it's right before I approve it, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want it.
You know, that's kind of where I'm at.
I think most, probably most important is get you all on board with the districts we have proposed.
Yeah.
And then the chart kind of falls in under that.
Right.
For sure.
I wanna go over that at some point, too.
We're going to.
Yeah, that's right.
Do that.
Okay, and cue.
So, yes, what did you wanna go over?
Just go over it again, just to make sure I understand.
Oh, sure. Let's just, so just keep scrolling until we hit one that has.
Yeah, just go over.
We have not struck.
Okay.
Cemeteries.
Rural district, we don't have any farms.
Hold on, we have care and boarding of animals, don't we?
In the district?
Yeah, we do.
In the.
Where do you have one?
We probably have it in another district as well.
We don't have rural district.
Oh, not in the rural, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the thing.
Get that out of there.
Not agricultural.
Yeah, the doggy.
I'm gonna hit the rest as well.
Make sure we just hit that, yeah. Where is that? I'll just go over all of it.
The canine place, that's not part of the village.
We don't, we don't have any, yeah.
No, Ponderosa to.
This is specifically, this is specifically an agricultural district.
From Ponderosa all the way to Northland is not the village.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that, yeah, we don't have something like that as a village.
Okay.
There is no agricultural.
From that church on the corner, all the way to Northland Plaza is not.
Oh, for sure. Okay.
If you look at that map that he sent us.
Can we just carve that out?
I don't know why it's not. I would love to annex it in, but.
Agricultural district?
No, just.
No, from Ponderosa to Northland.
I'd like that back.
Oh, yeah, well, we should have been more proactive, really, I think, we should, back in the day, they should have been proactive, and they could have, you know, squared off their borders at one sixty-one, and
Yeah.
you would have that, and really, you should have where our offices are now, over, temporary offices, right? That should all be in Minerva Park area, but they didn't jump on it back in the day. Columbus did.
Yeah.
So.
Let's deal with that.
Unfortunate.
Can we just put that in the con?
They don't want it.
Where Minerva Park ends.
All right, I have a question on sixty-four, when we get there.
Okay. We are on fifty-seven, fifty-eight. So we do still have, so we're all clear, we do still have an R-three district.
Yes, I know, but it was just not on the chart.
Right.
Yeah, that was my point.
Yeah, it's.
You crossed, you struck it.
It's not, yeah, something happened there, I.
You're good, you're good.
We'll fix it, we'll fix it.
Okay, go over it.
Anyways, R-three suburban residential district, the Jordan Road properties, all meet this district, so going through planning and zoning, did not feel the need to recommend a change specifically to the lots that were already in conformance, where everything is met, land and building. So we are keeping an R-three district there along Jordan.
The only thing that's in there that's not just houses is the church and the church park office, right?
Right, it, yeah, religious structures can be in any district.
Yeah.
It's no longer a church, though.
It is, it is.
It's a religious establishment.
They have, they have said faith-based action going on there from the non-hymn standpoint, so they support a church, I think they've still got a service area, so from minus.
Is that, is that clearly defined? 'Cause it says religious use is a church or other place of worship, provided it occupies a lot less.
But this is, this is if a new one was constructed, so when that one was permanent, it was allowed. And so that one, that's an example of a non-conforming.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, lot now in use within the district, and as long as they keep using it.
And I get very leery about.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Cramping on down on religious institutions, 'cause it's federalized, that we don't wanna mess with.
Okay, oh, 'cause this is saying not less than five acres, and that's probably not five acres.
No, it's only about acre-ish.
Yeah.
So it's not, it, it's, you know, they've been, they were, they preceded this code, they've been there a long time.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, so that's, that's just the classic non-conforming.
Yep.
It was built before this code came along, we're not gonna all of a sudden force them to try to buy an extra four acres of land that's not for sale.
Right.
Or pack up.
I would also say, I would also say, I don't necessarily think, you know, if someone came in and wanted to buy a house, you know, in any district, and have a small usage and conform, you know, that use to religious use, I see this five-acre thing used from time to time, and I don't, I don't know this in the case, but I also think that there's issues with it, you know? Because if someone can have a small parking lot and meet the requirements of setback, they can, you're supposed to allow religious uses.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a quick question on this, and I think you just answered it. If for some reason it got sold, and the person didn't wanna make it a church, they just wanted to live in it for ten years, and then sold it, could another church come in? Not conforming, or we would say, perhaps, that is not conforming, it doesn't comply, we really don't wanna sue a church not open here, 'cause that's not gonna go well in the courts.
It's probably not gonna go well. I think we would push back on it. We would say, eh, that was not conforming, we think that's expired, see how they, you know, just sort of advocating for the village there. But I wouldn't wanna push it too far. You're not gonna, yeah, I mean, it looks like a church.
It's not a winner.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna take that to the.
So just to be clear, R-three is just Jordan Road?
Right.
And nowhere else in the village do we allow public or private schools?
No, each section has that.
Each section has that.
So, yeah, you, every district will have its own list of.
Do we need that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to have that?
Yes.
Well, you, you absolutely want it that way, 'cause you want to be able to look, here's the district, here's what's in the district without.
But I guess the question is, why do we need?
This is a straight, this is a straight district.
Is it typical?
Yeah, so this is, so this is typical of a straight district, meaning if they meet the permitted uses, it's permitted, right? What we do nowadays a lot, and again, the, what we've done and are doing is we're putting things in planned districts, and that allows a lot more both creativity and control, both from our side and the developer's side, so when those things happen. So it's not, it's not a straight use anymore in those areas.
But what I'm saying is, so we're gonna allow for somebody to build a public or private school anywhere in the legacy part of the village, just on Jordan Road.
No, it's just, that's the original straight district.
And this is R-three.
This is R-three.
So, only on Jordan Road can somebody build a public or private school?
Well, I haven't gone through all the individuals, and we will, and let's see where else it shows up. I think it shows up in a couple other places.
It is in a couple others.
Do we need that?
R-twelve has private schools.
Why can't we just have dwellings, structures, home occupations, and accessory buildings, and religious uses?
Public schools are usually an acceptable use, which is why they're in that code.
Right, we're also, I mean.
But I'd like to get her out.
Well, again, they all have, but look, they all have that they have to have at least five acres, so.
Right.
I mean, the chances of that happening.
You can hold schools to that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you can hold the religious use.
Agreed.
But you can definitely hold the schools and private schools to that, so they're not gonna, unless they acquire a bunch of land, they're not gonna, they're not going there.
So, there's no, but here's the thing, there's no lot that's five acres anyways, why is that in there?
Because that's what, that's the code that was adopted, and that's was fairly standard at the time, and so they could put together five lots along Jordan, right? And then come back to you and say, hey, we bought these five houses, we're gonna put, we're gonna, we're gonna redevelop this, right? And then it would come through the village and it would go through a process at that point.
I'd like to strike that.
Yeah, it's up to you folks.
But if we.
I think with the traffic and all that, I think that's not a good idea.
Does that mean they can't do it at all, or does that mean?
Right.
Well, yeah, it would not be a permitted use, that's right.
I think it would be a nightmare with a one, one-way street, or a dead-end street, so I would like to strike that.
I don't see why, you will, we're probably arguing about nothing, 'cause if you strike it, no one will ever wanna build a school there, so there's probably no, there's not any practical harm to it.
I don't, I don't say, I mean.
I think it's just.
I don't know, strike it because it doesn't matter, let's just move on.
Sure.
Like, no one's gonna build a school on Jordan, that's not a fear, that is rational, so.
Yeah, so let's just get rid of it. Yeah, get rid of it.
I'll strike it, and I will verify that we don't have any issues with that.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay.
Sorry, trying to have a map, I'll give you that in a minute. All right, let's keep moving.
Yep.
Okay. Conditional uses, here's where you get into conditional uses for kindergarten or childcare facility. So, now, conditional uses, since we're gonna see them as something, or an extra step, where anything under a conditional use may be okay, but they've gotta come back to the village to get approval, and you can tack on a lot of requirements.
Yep.
With it. Or say no to it. If it doesn't, if it doesn't meet, you know, her needs.
Yep, and that, we discussed the criteria for conditional use review above.
Right. In the, in the earlier section.
Yeah, in the earlier sections.
And then, does this apply just to R-three or the rest of the village as well?
We're still all at R-three.
I know, but what I'm saying is, am I gonna see it later?
Yeah, you'll see this in other sections, where we have conditional uses.
Will I?
Yeah.
You'll have conditional uses specific to those districts.
And R-three is just Jordan Road.
Right, I'd like to strike that, too.
Right now, we're just in R-three, so.
I'm sorry, what are we striking now?
Kindergarten, childcare.
But this is saying.
If you strike childcare there, you're striking like a home, a home, a lady that lives in a home and has an ODGFS permit to watch five kids.
Right, so we're not, yeah. So when we say childcare, we're talking about the larger-scale childcares, I think.
Well, if you're licensed, I mean, that's, that counts in it, if you have a JFS license.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
So if we, if any of these folks.
So if we strike this, and someone has a home use for a daycare.
If we strike it, I don't know if it is.
I think it should be at least a little bit more, more specific. I think it can be a little bit more specific.
Okay. We'll note that, we have to have a discussion on this.
Yeah, I think that's a great, that's, I don't think we need to discuss that.
I don't like that they can have a chain link fence, or just, that's the one thing I'm not.
It can be adjusted now.
Yeah.
But again, it's under the conditional use.
But that's me.
You can, you can make a different requirement.
Gotcha, okay.
So it may, it may say that, that's just laying down some, some initial, chain links were okay back in the day.
Sure, sure, sure.
Now, then, it went to chain links anymore.
Yeah.
We can also adjust that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's safe either.
Four-foot chain link fence, that's a great way for a toddler to fall there.
It's like a little prison.
Yeah. No children's prisons, please.
Can there be barbed wire?
Is law for our change, that you can repair it to a certain extent, otherwise you just gotta replace it, right? I think we talked about that.
You, you, yeah, you, you have to take, if it's less than fifty percent, you can fix it. Once you start repairing it beyond fifty percent, you.
There you go, yep, yep.
Yeah, and we do have that, of us, yep. Okay.
Yep, so R-four is gone.
R-four is gone, there were no R-fours to this point anyways, so.
Right.
Made no sense, so it's out. Okay.
So, when we get to the next one, just a point of clarification, it should say R-twelve.
Yes.
In addition to.
David lives there.
So that should say R-twelve.
Urban residential is also R-twelve, okay, right, yeah.
Right, so we can have that in there.
Okay.
It just, it looks better when we.
For sure.
Reference it.
Sure, here's all the, the, R-twelve is that little bitty section.
Yeah, and so this also, see, Stacy, this also says public school parks, private schools.
Yeah.
It also has it.
Yeah.
So it'd say just.
Looking for your math?
Yeah, I just, I have it here somewhere.
I don't wanna.
It came out from Barb, right?
Yeah, Barb's in it, in our packet.
Do, somewhere, I also saw it.
Oh, wait, that's his thing? No.
Here we go.
There you go. It's in there.
Should be the total size, eighteen.
So I'd say, I'd say, I think, right, we wanna all of them to kind of mirror each other as far as that private school and whatnot, whatever you decide for the one, let's try to see if we can do it.
So that, that little R-twelve is this area right here, and.
Yeah, get rid of that.
So, we have a couple, a couple condos, we have eight condos.
I mean.
My special zebra.
Right.
Let's just make sure we make it nice.
Person that Mcnamara lives, yeah.
My special little zebra.
It is far about.
I mean, there's, there's not even five acres to be had in that whole.
All right, I'm gonna.
I didn't know if it's not applicable.
Are you gonna be striking the schools in that district?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pointless to be there, 'cause it's too small to bother.
Cut.
No, just, that's redundant.
All right, so now jumping back to the document.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll, after we get through this, we'll, we'll throw the map up where people need it and to go over it in a little more detail. Okay, so this is the urban residential district, here's your committed districts again, and again. There's all kinds of things in it that will never be done unless you rezone a section of the village to build more apartments or condos.
And that can happen, so.
Yeah, that's a future council decision perhaps, not today's.
PRD.
So yeah, all their things, and yeah, then we get to the PRD. This was, uh, the district that the, um, my homes are in.
Yep.
So that's all on the books. This was done in thirteen, by the way, so we didn't need to make any changes to that, except for a reference. Context, blah, 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 blah. Excited, we're halfway through the document now.
I've got, I have no idea.
Suburban office institutional.
So I.
I did have a question on seventy-four, let me see what it is.
Procedures modification, which we've done a few times.
No, seventy-five.
Alright.
Okay, so, oh yeah, here, so, this is good, yeah.
This is the example, so when we went through there, I wanted to give an example of how we change the word including to something different. And so in this particular case, because of how the eighty-nine code was written, they all have these including, which is just an example of what's included, but it is not restricted to just what's on the list.
I have case law for that one.
Changing the language, I just seem, went to law school in the last day or so, so.
I'm fitted to a lot of fancy lawyers.
So, now what we would suggest is, in these sections as an example, and this doesn't, we can pull this back out, we can add it to the stuff. If you are happy with these specific uses, we simply change it to limited to the following, so there's no other quandaries in these areas, okay? And I think going through this, it's nothing, I don't see anything, you know, offense to me, and I think.
What, where is this?
This is under suburban office institutional district. This is being utilized as an example.
Can we tell us the page?
What page are you on?
This is page, this is page seventy-two.
Sixty.
Okay, thank you.
Top of seventy-two.
And on the map where it says.
This is, what district is this on the actual map?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you guys do a split screen save?
This is.
No, I cannot do a split screen.
Is, this is the.
We're not that fancy, come on.
Is this still the, the PRD?
Yeah. So, the suburban office institutional, there, there are several sections. We've also, we've also extended it a little bit in some places. We put the schools in it, which makes sense, that are in the, the older section here, along with the new middle school. Uh, this little bitty area right here where the current drug rehab facility is located is in a suburban office institutional district. Um, and that is pretty much it.
You put the pool, you put the pool in there?
Uh, we did, we just, because again, public facilities, made sense based on the definitions that we include those in there.
Is that, is that also where the storage unit facility is?
No, storage unit facility is here, that's gonna be, that's being proposed to be changed to planned commercial district.
Okay.
Alright, and then these are all in the planned commercial district up here as well too, so as they, especially where we have, as you know, we have a vacant lot next to the printing place, that's gonna come back in front of you at some point, and then the council will be able to talk to them directly about the development and what needs to happen there.
What is two nine 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 and?
Two nine 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 was in the neighborhood commercial.
Okay, so that is the same, okay.
Always in the neighborhood commercial, we didn't change that, yeah.
I got a question about the suburban office and institutional.
Okey dokey.
Um, the drug and rehab facility?
Is in that.
Is in that?
Right. One time.
Yeah, Halloween.
You don't. So, but we're gonna talk through a few things here, so. So, again, this gets back to conforming and non-conforming uses, you know, there was nothing in, in the, in the old code, right? That facility is fine, because if you go down under professional, where you have everything for offices of different medical folks, you have, you had catchalls, like services not elsewhere classified, is in the original code, so that's been proposed to be scratched.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and limited to the following items specifically in there. And there's health and allied services, which you can also argue that drug rehab facility is a health and allied service, okay, so now. Although we can, we can more formalize that definition, because I don't wanna get rid of that, simply because that includes people who are massage therapists and physical therapists and things of that nature, all fit under allied services. So, just wanna be cautious about sometimes what we say in these things. Um, so again, limited to the following, replacing including is the proposal in this case, and to keep that in mind as we look through the rest of the code, where we've got this particular format, okay? Jumping to conditional uses, what we did do is, there are several different conditional uses here, under the SOI district. What we did do, and this is, this will be firmed up, but through under exceptional uses, drug rehab facilities. Now, what this simply means is that, and we think this is the best way to handle it, and Jesse will jump in in a second to kinda go over why conditional use is the best place to put this. If at some point in time, the rehab center, uh, stops functioning, they, let's say they go back to being a nursing home, okay? Down the road, someone will say, ah, you know what, I wanna make this drug rehab facility again, okay? Now they have to go through the conditional review process, which you can place different types of conditions on them. You can also deny them at that stage, and that's an easier way to handle this, and I think they're, we're more comfortable with proposing it than just specifically mixing them out of the code. Because they're allowed to be there still, we're just making it a bit more onerous if something changes in the future, so.
Yeah, I mean, yes, that sums up. I mean, you, you also get into some issues on those types of facilities. Discrimination would be the wrong word, but treating people differently based on what is essentially an underlying medical condition, and you can get, it can get a little fuzzy there, so. An outright ban is a little rough, something like this just requires some justification.
Allow someone to open some sort of weird dialysis clinic and say that's fine, but not a drug clinic, because we understand people with diabetes, they need their dialysis. Drugies, you know, we don't like them, that makes it difficult.
I didn't say it, but yes, that's pretty, that's pretty point on, that's, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, that, that's what it comes down to what it's about.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna cause a pause here just so we can have a quick debate, because the debate, I notice we're only about halfway down the slider bar on the side there on the thing.
Wait, where are we? Cause I have something.
We're on page seventy-two.
Okay, cool.
Seventy-five.
We're about halfway down.
Oh wait. Go back to.
Past eight thirty, do we wanna do another ten or fifteen? Do we wanna set a, a time? Cause I, I'm fine being here till like maybe as late as nine, but I have work early in the morning.
Sure.
Nine to nine.
Are we, do you think we'd be able to get through the Minerva Park plant legacy district?
Let's plan on doing that.
If we get to that, that should, I think that's next, roughly next, if we do that.
I mean, that's, as I say, I'm not saying we have to end now, I just wanted to have a plan.
No, no. Yep.
And also, I think that just helps keep people focused, that they're not going like, oh my goodness, how long is it gonna be?
Yeah.
If we know we have this next chunk and then we're done, we can focus on it.
Right, so you, you wanted to go back?
Can I go to seventy-three, because I don't see why we have osteopathic physicians listed as separately than offices of physicians and surgeons?
I did not design this code, this is captured from nineteen eighty-nine code, so if there's something specific.
Right, so I would like to strike that, because that's redundant, because osteopathic physicians are also physicians.
Okay.
Yeah, or D O R does empty use.
Yeah, that's just too, the only thing I wanna slip in there is offices of podiatric physicians, because there are some insurance companies that classify us differently, so I think we should not exclude any sort of physician period, and that would make it a little bit clearer.
So what if we just strike podiatric instead of osteopathic?
Yep, that's what I'm trying to say.
Got it.
Yep.
Got it, okay.
Cool. Yeah, if, if you, again, if there's any thoughts, more things you wanna see added to this?
Oh yeah.
Please, email, we'll, we'll include them.
Alright.
Cool, okay, going through that. Alright, neighborhood commercial district is the next one. Um, this is the one as noted on the, um, chart, this is our forward facing Cleveland Avenue, uh, along with a couple ones where two nine 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 is, and then we've got this corner piece on the border, boundary, the northeast boundary of the village here, where currently it's a, I think an auto showroom, or was at some point. We had a marijuana user interested in this location here, but it's right on the other side of one sixty-one, um, south of the Marathon Gas Station, right there on the other side.
Where the car dealer is right now.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a little car dealership.
Yes, so that's a neighborhood commercial district right there. Nice little building.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know that was our.
It is ours.
Yeah.
I haven't read that one, I haven't read that this year.
Yeah.
So.
Um, okay.
So, okey dokey. Okay, now, this is where, in leaving it including, we can do limited to and change specifics, so we can, we can do that. If that's what the, if the council wants, I simply bring it up, um, because that's the options. Do you wanna add anything to that?
It, it, the only thing I would caution you is to be extremely thorough.
Yeah.
If you are going to say, if you are going to say, these are what are permitted. I mean, that is a, a why, there's a big world out there, so it needs to be as specific as humanly possible, if that is the route we're going to go. Because as I read this, what it means is, if you sell goods, that's permitted use.
Right, so.
It's a, it's a big ever-changing world too, so if tomorrow a new retail category is invented.
Then we can add it to the code. Yeah.
Or it would be excluded, which is ahead.
Hmm, I would disagree.
It's, it's, I don't know that I'd agree that it's that much of a heading.
It's not.
But it gets into, at that point, someone is coming to us saying we want to put this building here, and we have to amend the code for them, and then it's why didn't we amend it for them? I don't know, I'm just, they can, you know, think that I could actually have it, because there's, you know, an awful lot of things that aren't listed on those.
Right, so I think we need to put.
Like bookstore's not up there, but we should probably be able to have a bookstore.
Depends on the kind.
Shoes, yard store, plumbing supplies.
Right, this is where we get into shenanigans.
Right, so this is.
Right now, you've got, you know, along Cleveland, you've got a number of things that are not in here, right? Services and otherwise, that will affect those business centers, now they're, again, they can continue to function there, but.
But they can't, once they leave.
Right, no, no, a similar business cannot.
Someone else can come in.
I, I, I really think the focus should be on, if we have things like, say, car dealerships.
Right.
Um, that we wanna exclude, we focus on excluding the things we don't, because trying to list a comprehensive list of the things that we want isn't feasible or practical.
Well, and that's why it says including, meaning not, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But I know some people are, want it to be a list that is just this, some people even interpret the list to be just that, um, is not an incorrect interpretation, obviously.
That's not true.
What some people do.
There is, there is case law.
Interpret that later, that's incorrect.
No, there is, there's a Supreme Court guide for us, um, online lawyers or lawyers by proxy, that did say that it could be interpreted, if there's two different separate codes that have very specific uses of the word including to, it implies that it is limited to those uses.
If there's two different codes?
If there's two different, if it's spelled out in two different areas, hold on, I gotta find it real quick. Um.
Right. I mean, here's my, and, and I'm happy to read that and happy to look at, here is my zoning laws are read broadly in favor of the user.
Right.
And when it says rendering services incidental to the sale of goods.
Right.
A court is going to look at, are they selling goods? I frankly don't care, if you have a problem with it, happy to do it, might be a lawsuit.
Right.
Might win.
Still a lawsuit.
My guess would be a lose, but you know what I mean, the, so it's, I think the language is gonna fall there on the sale of goods. Because it's impossible to list every good on earth.
Yep, so Keen Corp versus United States. Every word within a statute is there for a purpose and should be given its due significance. This fact only underscores our duty to refrain from reading a phrase into the statute when Congress has left it out, where Congress includes particular language in one section of a statute but omitted in another. It is generally presumed that Congress acts intentionally and purposely in the, in the disparate inclusion or exclusion, Rosello versus United States.
I would, I would say that that is absolutely correct, but that is a reading of congressional law that courts have read. Congress is held to a far more specific standard than the general police power of municipality.
Okay.
So Congress is required to precisely list exactly what they are telling these agencies to do and what to spend money on.
Right.
Okay.
Local government has broader municipal police power, it's, it's illustrious.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so here's just, this is a general question, I don't know that anybody can answer this question right now, and Eric, you're probably the best one to answer this question.
Maybe.
With our permitted uses that we currently have, with our retail stores that we currently have, and this is just a do you know? Do, does everything that we currently have fit into just these including, or do we have some that, because I don't think so either.
No, 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 they, they, they don't, they, we can.
Cell phone store up there.
Right, so I just, I'm merely just, I'm, again, devil's advocate here, I'm just trying to say that there's.
There's several, there's several issues that'll be, if you just make it, if you make it limited to these items, this is, this is less, I would say this is a lot more specific and therefore problematic than up here, where we cover a lot of offices, agents, insurance, I mean, there, there's several different catchalls up here under, under the suburban office and institutional, as an example, right? I mean, it's just everything under the sun.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it really is, and we, and we have miscellaneous investing institutions.
Right.
Which, again, was, could be Bitcoin.
Right, right.
So, which, which everyone here, I assume, is fine with, but it's the same thing.
Really, I don't need some giant Bitcoin mine with a server farm.
I would interpret that as industrial.
Manufacturing, industrial, you're right.
Of some type, I, I, I.
Mining.
A Bitcoin office where we could go and make your investments is what this refers to.
Right.
Right? So very different, and, and pretty much, this covers.
Okay, wait, go back a little bit.
Go ahead. What are you looking at, this one? This is just institutions.
Is secondary school considered middle school and high school, or is the secondary?
Secondary is middle school.
And high school?
And high school, it's weird how middle school, middle school's in between.
Yeah, some.
No, and only their elementary, if they ever would have turned that into a high school.
No, it's, it's, you have, you have, uh, ele- elementary, and then secondary goes, anything after elementary.
Is it?
Only high school.
All the way to college, okay.
Secondary.
No, I just saw secondary, and I thought that was middle school, so that's my, I just wanted to make sure we cover that, in case of case.
It's language that came around back when people just went to sixth grade and stuff.
There you go.
And going on to high school was considered secondary school, because a lot of people didn't.
I mean, it says and normal school, so maybe that, I guess it's catchall again.
It is, yeah, this is, this is not possible.
They were being very little.
So.
It is.
Anyways.
Yeah.
Did I just see drive-in maybe?
Uh.
It's a conditional use.
It's a conditional right here, yeah, auto, the drive-in or outdoor service facilities.
That was the case.
And it has to be developed in association with.
Okay, so we go back to the same, I, I know everybody's, at some point, this is our main thing that I know we wanna finish up today, so what do we want to do? What do we not want to do?
I think this is, yeah.
No, no, I was just saying, so this is something, this is something, I think, based on this, that we can take suggestions and make comments, it's gonna need some longer.
Yeah. Yeah.
Constructive debate around what you wanna, now, when we're on that subject, we do have a suggestion, and I think, did you jump into the moratorium suggestion, or did you want a different?
Okay.
Which one? Oh.
It's a mess.
We're undergoing code rewrite process, you could, in theory, put a moratorium on development while this is happening. It's a reasonable thing to do as we're looking at different uses and everything, uh, it would be village-wide, wouldn't apply to any specific use or specific district. And we.
On development.
Specifically on development, there's a, there's a subsidiary question to that, which is, if they are, what are they, what are we really putting a moratorium on? What, what are we putting a moratorium on, what does the user need from us? Uh, if they need something from the township or the county, uh, it's very possible that the township or the county just goes ahead and grants the permits that they need, because they're not necessarily subject to our review.
There is one, there is one point at which they have to start with, with, so they have to have signed off a zoning certificate through us, because the building departments will not move forward on any particular development or use without that zoning certificate. And so that's the standard starting point, before they disconstruct or build out or whatever they need to do on their lot.
So that's an option if you wanna do it, uh, we'd have to have, to do it, we would need to write up, uh, obviously an ordinance, putting a pause on it for a specified timeline, can't be indefinite, and it has to be tied to some real tangible reasons about why we are doing this.
Cause the code's a big old mess?
I, I would prefer something a little more precise.
Essentially, we, we have a week to work that out, um, you know.
If it's something you want to.
Yeah, and I would say, I would ponder this for the next week, we can, we can have a draft ready to go. Um, there has, the request has been put into the office for said zoning certificate, so can't hold him forever.
Mm-hmm.
Counter.
But, you know, it is up to the, this body to make that decision.
So, a couple things on that, a moratorium lasts for how long?
As, as we define.
You, you put, you put the definition on.
What is the short?
I have seen ninety days, I have seen three mon, I have three months.
Can we extend it? Like, what if we're like, okay, I need, I need three months, and then all of a sudden, I read this and I'm like, wait a minute, this is.
It absolutely can be, I just wanted to reiterate that when doing that, that we have to, as you said earlier, we have to show our work on why we are doing this. So it can't be like, eh, we didn't get to it, it needs to be, it needs to have a reason.
It's on hold for this reason, and we have to do this review.
It's reasonable, in my opinion, to do it for the next sixty days while we're working through, because I don't anticipate we're gonna get to a vote until the late October, early November timeframe at the earliest, right? So you can put it into, you can put it into moratorium, it would be my preference that we have this on the books to start off January one, so that we can, you know, that, that makes sense for us to do business for the village coming into the new year regardless, right? And so, we spend, we spend a lot of time on this, but we do need to bring it all together here soon, I think.
I think we should do three months, because adding in the holiday season, I think, I don't know if everybody's gonna be focused on the code right before the holidays.
That's why, that's why we wanna get done before the holidays.
So here's, these are, again, these are questions, does that stop every single person that is trying to rent in the village in our commercial space? Or solely, so if we have somebody that wants to come into our commercial space and their, their lease was up, let's say.
Right, sure, I mean, yeah, it makes sense, yeah, a storefront opens.
I wanna know what we could potentially, I'm just, again, I feel like I should be doing devil's advocate, because I do understand a business owner's point to this.
Sure.
Are we tying the hands of Yasmin Market getting new renters in there? Are we tying the hands of these other, you know, we just talked about this with two nine nine nine?
Here's all I would, here's what I would say, the most defensible moratorium in lieu of us writing a, redoing a code rewrite is yes, it pauses everything. Because it is the fact that we're looking at the village as a whole, and whether you own or rent, you're gonna have a use, and we're trying to figure out what the uses are. If you start divvying it up, it gets less and less defensible as we go.
Cause that, I mean, that freaks me out, because I just realized business owners live and die by their rent, and if they can't afford to pay their rent for ninety days, it's a long time.
Practically speaking, if I may, um.
It's okay, it's okay, we won't melt.
Practically speaking, if, if a space, let me give you an example, an office like a two nine 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 building, or any retailer, if they're rented as is, if someone takes over for the same use, we're not gonna know.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's very fair, yeah.
So it's, it's only when, it's only when they come in to do some major change to the space, or rebuild the site, or redo the interior of the site, that we know, because they make a request to do it, otherwise landlords, they're not paying attention, they, they lease it out, and they lease out the space it is. A, a three-person office is not gonna have any changes to it, it's just gonna be, people are gonna move their furniture in and out, sometimes they have furniture, right? So, that's the practical, real-world example there.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we.
It's up to you guys, and you guys can discuss it to your next meeting, and we can have some.
I think we should do it. Can, can we do ninety? I just think we need a little more time.
This is up to, not up to me to decide.
We can, wait.
I think thirty-sixty days is about as much as I can put everything on hold.
But just for clarification, let's say we say ninety days, can we lift it before the ninety days is up?
Sure, but what I would want you, what I would prefer would be to sixty, and if it's not done at thirty, but, you know, I'd like to work it.
Okay. Okay.
That way, rather than put a full stop at, and then try and work back, yeah.
Okay, then yes.
Agreed.
Alright, we will draft something for you, and consider it if you want, if not, do.
Is there any liability to the village by doing this, potentially?
Sure. It, it would depend, you know, you are permitted to put a moratorium on it, uh, if someone's in the midst of, uh, developing or coming in and, and we hold things, it's all going to depend on, one, if they challenge it, two, if somebody challenges it, when the court would say that their vest, their property rights have vested. Uh, I think there would be, there's, there's, there's differing case law when that happens, I think we have a reasonable, a, a reasonable and defensible argument that your property rights probably don't vest until you close on a deal, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet my life on that. You know, it depends on what anybody is doing with the site, who knows, so.
It, it, it has to go with the reasonable expectations, has to go with their investment side, yeah, there's a lot of little things that we're concerned.
Yeah, so I just wanna let, no, I'm not bulletproof on that, there's, there's a good argument, yeah.
Well, I just think it needs to be full disclosure for everybody involved.
But we still can extend.
Anything.
We'll extend it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just worried we're not doing that.
Well, I was gonna say, I know we're trying to wrap some stuff up.
Right.
I will, I wanted to, as we're looking at some stuff, I know I asked you to look at.
Okay.
One or two things.
Yeah.
So one thing I asked Jesse if he could look at was called a formula regulation.
Yeah.
Which a lot of, um, historic districts use.
Right.
It basically says that a retail, a retail chain cannot come in, uh, formula, right, what's it called?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, you can't use your standard sign plan.
They can't come in and use their standard cookie cutter stuff, they, you can't have the same uniforms, you can't have the same colors, the same signage, the same retail fixtures that you have. Everything has to be unique for that.
For that.
Yeah.
So you were talking about overlay district for the court, or essentially, I think it's one of.
I mean, that's, that is essentially where it would go, because anything else is residential, so it would, yeah, it would essentially be an overlay district.
So we would have, we would have that on Cleveland Avenue, which is perfectly fine, that's something, again, I think we can, we can definitely bring up in P and Z and talk through a, a district or, or, you know, of some type, you know, the overlay where you could put in standards, you know.
Right. It doesn't say like a Starbucks can't come in, it just says a Starbucks can't look like every other Starbucks in the country. Has to be unique for that area.
You do, in like New Albany and stuff, where they have all like the stone fronts, like, like a Burger King doesn't look like a Burger.
Think about uptown Westerville, right? So the CVS that's sitting on that corner doesn't look like all the other CVS, they may have their CVS sign out front, but they're in a brick building.
Yeah.
It'll look a little different, and then that.
At the end, towards the end of this document, there is stuff about signage of.
Sure, sure, but I mean, this is just kind of.
So I, I would, would encourage folks to make sure that they look through that and, and understand it, you know, we, we limit the num, we limit the sizes of signs, we limit the numbers of colors they can have, we limit the, what you can have.
Sure.
The accoutrement that goes on and around here, so we're talking about different things, but I want you to understand what we currently have.
Right, because the formula references the inside of the building as well as the outside.
That's nice.
The other thing is called a dollar store ordinance, it basically says that you can't have more than one dollar store, type store within distance of another one. So we do have a family dollar that's across the street on Cleveland, it could potentially limit us from having some of that.
I'm not sure that that would, you know, if it's not in our jurisdiction.